It's 6:30. Time to call the meeting of the Stockbridge Planning Board to order. Thank you all for attending. The first item on the agenda is, as usual, approval of the previous meeting's minutes of March 1st, which were distributed. Can I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any comments, corrections, additions, smart remarks? Hearing none. Can you take a roll call, please?
Wayne?
I'll abstain, it wasn't here.
Marie?
Hi.
Bill?
Aye.
Gary?
Yes.
Nancy?
Hi.
Kate?
Hi. Hi, everybody.
Hello.
Um, I don't think Carl has...
I don't see him yet.
...tuned in. Okay. The next is a Form A for Train Hill Road. We have two of them. This is the one.
Mike?
Yep.
So Mike's going to do Train Hill.
Sorry, I'm just making sure I've got the right...
Hey, Mike. I didn't see you sitting there. If he put her attention.
Yeah. Hi.
Hi, Mike Parsons from Kelly County Parsons Surveyors down in Great Barrington. And I'm here tonight on behalf of Georgis, who bought a piece of property from Alien Bliss, which is this piece here.
Parcel A.
Parcel A. No.
No.
He bought this here. And now he wants to acquire Parcel A, which is 5,600 square feet, from his neighbor, Alan Bernbaum. Alan wants to convey it to him. And Joe wants to buy it. So the only line that's new here on this plan is this 90-foot line, right here. We've got to know that it's not to constitute a building lot under the current bylaws. And it's to combine, be combined to Georgis' other land. And it leaves Alan with 4.1 acres and 388 feet of frontage. And he is in, well, he's actually, his house is in IR1 zoning district. This piece is in RC zoning district. And the RC requires...
The piece that's being conveyed.
Is in the RC zoning district. Right. And so Alan's piece that's in the RC requires 20,000 square feet, 125 feet of lot width. And his piece that's in the IR1 requires an acre and 175 feet of road frontage. And I don't know how it's interpreted with it crossing boundary lines, but...
So is there no...
Zoning district lines.
It crosses in the back of the property?
Crosses kind of right through the middle. Right, kind of right through the middle. Yeah, I mean, I can show you out here if that's... Yeah, this is the zoning district boundary. So the house is in the IR1. And the tennis court in the front of the property is in the RC. But we've got enough frontage in combination to, and enough acreage to meet both at O's separately if we need it to.
So this line is going from this guy to this guy? Or this guy to this guy?
Yeah.
From this guy to this guy? Okay, so this guy will own this?
Right.
And have that frontage?
And have that frontage. Right.
It'll extend his frontage.
Yes, it will. And that's the reason, well, he, I think...
Usually.
No, he had zoning minimum frontage down here on Aberystwyth, but he wants to, because of the lay of the land, I can tell you that he wants to bring his driveway along this boundary line.
Who's he?
Joe DeGeorges.
The question was, who's he? This is DeGeorges, right?
Yeah, Joe DeGeorges. I'm sorry.
This is the yard requirements of the district in which the lot has road frontage shall apply to the entire lot. Does it have road frontage in two?
In two places.
So that's what that is. All right. I get it now.
Thank you. Hey, Carl, come on in.
Hi.
This is probably irrelevant.
No. I'm sorry, who's the... Oh, I'm sorry, Wayne, were you talking?
Yeah, I just was a question on, does it change his ability to do anything here?
No.
Doesn't, okay. That was all, Kate.
Who's the, is this, I'm sorry, what's your first name, Mr. Parsons?
Mike.
Mike, okay. And so are either, are any of the lots here becoming more, becoming non-conforming or more non-conforming?
There's no lot that is becoming, well, let me see, how do I phrase this? Mr. Bernbaum's remaining land will remain conforming. The parcel that we're creating, the little parcel with a half acre, is not, we're creating a non-conforming lot with the provision that it be added to the other land of DeGeorges so then it folds in and then it becomes conforming.
And it's only an eighth of an acre, not a half an acre, right?
Yeah, it's, yeah. .129 acres, it's a tenth of an acre.
And that's Parcel A?
That's Parcel A.
And it will not be a legal building lot?
No. And it's so stated on the...
It'll become part of the other lot.
Well, it, will it remain a separate lot?
No.
It becomes part of...
It becomes part of that.
It's just, right now, it's a parcel.
Right, it has to be.
Yeah.
Yeah, I get it.
So it's not...
Well, once it's, once it's deeded over to Joe, then it becomes part of his land. But in order to, for that deed to happen, we need your endorsement that it's not a subdivision.
Right.
I make a motion, we accept this Form A application.
Second.
Yeah, again, I'm not sure what we're required to do is to accept as opposed to...
Right.
Acknowledge that no special permit is required.
Right. Threw this last time.
I'm sorry.
No, I don't, I forgot too, so...
But I think that's the way the wording is. So are you amending your motion?
I mean, I can, I can withdraw it, I guess. If we don't need to vote on it, then I can withdraw it. I think we need to vote on it.
I think we vote, but it's voting.
We do. We have to vote on it.
It would be good.
That's why they're here.
But I think the point is just to acknowledge that this does not need, that this is a Form A.
Does that require our approval?
And it does not require our approval. Just acknowledging, that's what we're doing, we're acknowledging it.
We'd do it with that language.
Yes.
I would make a motion with that language.
I'll second it again.
Got that, Jennifer?
Yep.
Any further comment? Any comments from the public? Okay, Jennifer, can you call the roll, please?
Sure. Wayne?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Marie?
Hi.
Gary?
Aye.
Nancy?
Hi.
Kate?
Hi.
Carl?
Aye.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Mike, who's got to sign?
Yep.
Now, well...
I got it.
And, oh, you got one there, I can see.
She's ready.
She's always ready.
Jennifer, um, point.
Sorry, that's okay. I was going to leave him for a paperweight.
I did, but it missed the fun stuff.
I know.
That's the Mylar. Yep.
Do you want to go to the second line?
I'm good.
Okay, here's the plan for the rest of them.
Do you want, don't we do several copies?
Here.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
I got you.
I always only want...
All right.
I got you.
Stepfield Passivation, like sliding through.
Keep going.
Yep.
Yes.
It's fine to do that as well.
No, it's not.
Yeah. You don't have to spend this long drive all the way to San Francisco and find out they don't.
Like I meant the bank, mortgage.
Thank you.
Next one?
Go back at the beginning.
Yeah, it'll be easier.
Is the season coming up?
Oh, I don't know.
It's not. 128 septic systems in the last two years.
Have the guys to do it.
Luckily, things, equipment, technology have helped, but...
But it's every single business.
Today should just... Tonight, the house is for sale.
I'm glad. I'm glad.
I do, I do.
That's a haul. That's a haul.
This is a lot easier than having, you have a way to have us come...
I know, isn't it?
And go downstairs and...
So much nicer.
Might have to go back to Zoom meetings and all that. Afford to try. Oh my God.
Is there one more there?
Actually made a question. Els.
Yeah.
In the prime self.
Yeah.
Let's see, okay, so Trier Hill Road. Little nervous spot.
Yeah. Customers then, huh? They want it, they want what they want.
It'll connect to...
Runs into Castle Hill.
Castle Hill.
At the bottom.
Right.
And Cherry Street. Yeah, Cherry, yeah, and Cherry Street will intersect it up at the top of the hill.
He wants to leave.
Told me, but, you know, of course, everything's with...
Is Carl in? Did he sign? Did he sign? Did he, did you sign the line?
Hopefully, it's not quite, but...
How far out are you?
It's on Church Street.
Depends what it is.
Well, the motorcycles are out.
Oh. We don't have our guy.
Yeah, we'll take care of it.
All right.
It's the time of year. Let's call us the people. All right, I want to put up with Frank.
I know. I was out assessing others.
You can let this do it.
If you got real...
Yeah, it's usually a couple of different things. I do chuckle, although I look through.
All right.
And... Why the project? Way back. Excellent.
Oh, yeah.
I just find it very interesting.
It is. Absolutely is.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. I hope you're well. Good to see you in person.
Good night.
Or he'll have you back again.
Exactly true. That's for that.
I assume. Now that we signed everything, you're going to do this next...
If I'm surreal, yeah.
Please.
Okay.
The floor is yours.
I'll use. No idea what people on the screen would say. So this is 25 Cherry Hill. This is Swan property. This is way down on the south end. Where it swamps out behind here. This little red house, 25. And there's a little shed. Right now, the zone R2, still got 1.73 acres. Sort of the same thing as Mike just went through. Clover wants to make it a conforming lot, so we're proposing to put this piece in here, which is about .27 acres, makes it two acres.
Exactly.
I don't know why surveyors do that, it's not my plan. They make them exactly, yes. It's like the frontage, you know, this frontage right here for the remaining parcel is exactly 250 at the building setback line. So it makes, leaves this lot as a conforming lot. Still has 278 feet of frontage on the road, but 250 at the building setback line. So that conforms to the R2. This becomes two acres. And it's going to have 313.85 feet of frontage. So that's pretty much it. Unless you have questions. And I do have Mylars and paper copies. Do you want? Yes.
Same question I had for Mike. So nothing is becoming more non-conforming?
Same, same answer. We're getting, we're creating a small parcel to be attached to the existing parcel to make it a conforming lot. So this, in this case, we're actually making, creating a conforming lot.
Okay, so I make a motion that we approve this, endorse this request as an approval not requiring subdivision review.
Yep.
A second tip.
Any discussion, whatever.
Is this Nick's old house? Is this the one that...
It's a little red house.
Yeah, no, but is that, is that the one that Hans is talking about? That like was, I don't know, the Grippa Hall's house?
I don't know of that, no background of that.
There's some interesting stuff.
I'm sure there is.
All right, so we got a second roll.
We had a motion and a second. No further discussion. Jennifer, you call the roll, please.
Yep. Wayne?
Aye.
Marie?
Hi.
Bill?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Nancy?
Hi.
Carl?
Aye.
You got some X's house?
I have a black pen, but you guys already have.
What happens to sign in blue? The governor put us on the...
They wouldn't take it.
So, you know, blue actually doesn't show up on a, on the old scan.
Yeah, that's why they had to be black.
Yeah. I've seen them sign in blue when you make a copy out of a copy machine. Not on the new copy machines, by the way, on the old ones.
Go ahead, you're on the top. You sign first.
I left a spot for you.
You're the cheese. Oh, he left a spot for you. But Terry, who's the town clerk, she told me that she cannot sign anything in blue. Everything has to be signed in black.
That's interesting.
Yeah, so we start it on all our things.
She was like, I don't have any blue pens, I'm in black.
Yeah.
When I used to do corporate income taxes, you had to do it in black.
If you do your own taxes.
If you do your own? I don't know. But you see them? Not by computer?
I think it's still possible to do it by them. I think they must be... Everybody has a computer. Looked at you.
Like one? Oh, here, I'll give you guys a ten. Lock down the table on this. That'd be the end, you could never go again. Hey, Mark. I'm on the Zoom. So, this, and here's the road frontage, right? It's not divided that way.
I don't know if it's, is this divided?
I don't know.
No, this just says that this is IR1 and this is RC. It's still the same lot.
Right, it's the same lot. What I'm saying is that the RC is here on this side of that lot, right? And IR1 is on that side. So the frontage here...
Bill, looks like they've kind of held up on the bridge there for us.
So that pretends...
You know, when they're working, when they're not.
So happy I asked her.
I thought he was saying divided this way.
You know whether they're having eye chain issues and getting...
No.
Okay.
Machines or supplies yet? Or having work stoppages or...
Jennifer? Be done.
Four days without...
Do you have to put the date in?
Right.
Showing up.
Yeah, I usually put it.
Hopefully, still.
The next day.
By springtime.
I wonder if they got 24 for some reason or another.
Do you even walk across it now?
No. You're not supposed to.
It looked like it was all...
It is supposed to be. The winds of last week blew down part of the fence. But it's...
Carl?
It's dangerous.
Oh, thank you.
Well, I don't even have a line, which I do. I think it's supposed to be Bay. Big Bay. Means nothing because the second one...
Does Shane need a report? Funding.
The money.
Allow them to do both.
Are you happy?
All good.
There's no traffic there.
102? That's the risk part.
That's nice.
Can't do that, I have to drive or I have to...
You can put your own little bridge up.
Need a permit for the dock, though.
Out of that planning board.
Eight Hawk Barn Road.
Yeah.
Special permit continued. We don't have to re-read the official language.
No, because it's continuation.
Continuation, okay, good.
So this is Eight Hawk Barn LPOD. I think it's been presented. You folks been out to the site visit. Just a very quick overview. It's a proposed demo of the existing house deck. There's been per test done out of the site. And a septic system's been designed in this location. I do have approval from Tri-Town Health Department for the plan. They don't issue septic system permit until contractors onboard. But I do have a, if you want a copy of it, there's a Tri-Town Health Department's approved plan that the septic system design is the only place on the parcel that really a septic system can go because of ledge condition, shallow ledge conditions. It's the only place that has enough soil to support a septic system. So the proposal is to demolish the existing house. It was in a dumpster, it gets taken off-site. And then propose construction of a new house that's in this gray area. That is proposed to have deck side and a patio on the backside. This is a free-draining, stone-based new driveway. Driveway's proposed to be a crushed stone, washed crushed stone surface. And then have a stone base to it about a foot thick diameter base. This is a free-draining driveway. There is infiltration proposed for compensate for the greater impervious area on the parcel over the existing impervious area provided by, that is the existing house. To create the infiltration area, well, the infiltration area is going to be taking the roof drainage off of the house and provide for drainage behind the house so that the, any drainage from above the house will be collected into the foundation drains. And the foundation drains can... And the foundation drains can get run through the infiltration area. To provide for the infiltration area, because we have shallow ledge conditions, it's a raised system, not unlike a septic system, but it's almost the same thing. It's got plastic chambers, has volume that we can allow the water to infiltrate into. It collects and it can dissipate into the soils. To make this a mound area, what this is flat, it'll be a flat lawn area. We're proposing to put a retaining wall. Retaining wall is a precast concrete structures block system that can be put in. And that's going to be stepped and then have, proposed to have vegetation on the face of it. The septic system has basically the same block retaining wall system proposed for that area. And that will also have a vegetated cover for planted at the base of it on the top. And in the middle of the wall, there's a step in the wall. So that'll be all vegetated. The rest of the site is pretty much, there's a lot of trees being removed. We're proposing to plant approximately 78 trees. There's 61 proposed to be removed. So there's a lot of trees, but the site's fully wooded. We went through that, this is a revision. We gave you updated plans that shows the planting scheme. This planting scheme came up as a response to Conservation Commission's concerns about they would like to see a two to one ratio. If you take one tree down, give us two. Well, there's just not enough room on the site to do that. It's a fairly tight site. You'd be, I don't think you'd have a mortality rate if you got anything more. The trees that are proposed to be planted are all these little round ones. What is shown as existing, these are existing trees. We're retaining as many existing trees as we can practically. There'll be plenty of trees that will be in proximity of falling on this house, but we're trying to retain as many as possible. There is a plant, there's, this is proposed to be planted as fern plugs. So they come in with small fern plugs. They just insert them in the ground. So this would all be native ferns. And the rest of the planting is all native species also. It's white pine, balsam fir, black birch, sugar maple, red maple. And then there's mountain laurel and maple leaf, five-hermes as shrubs. These are all pretty much what's on the site, all the trees that are there. There's proposed to be a, under LPOD, we're allowed you're allowed to create a 20% of your lake frontage as an open space or 35 feet. This has 100 feet of lake frontage, so we have proposing a 20-foot wide opening in this area right here. With a 15, about a 15-foot back, so it's only about 300 square feet. No trees to be cut in that location. Most of the vegetation in that area right now is honeysuckle. So they're proposing to take out the honeysuckle tree to do no like substantial moving of earth and re-vegetate that as a grass lawn area. There's proposed to be a 30-inch wide crushed stone pathway to get down from the house site down to that beach, we'll call the beach area, lakefront area. And there is proposed to be a dock that is meeting the town codes of 25 feet. Maximum 25 feet from the shoreline and 200 square feet of surface area. Your if I can run through your checklist. About 0.9 acres, it's Zone R4. There is some non-conforming, the lot's non-conforming in size. It's not, it's not conforming in the frontage. And there's non-conforming in the side yard setbacks to the existing structure. Existing side yard setbacks, 32.5. We will be going to the selectment for pre-existing non-conforming special permit for the side yard setbacks. Also for, hopefully they'll approve the wall out in front because it's it'll be non-conforming if they're calling it a structure. We're in the process of the Conservation Commission, we're in three meetings. So it'll be our fourth meeting. They've hired White Engineering to review this as a submission for the Notice 710 and stormwater calculations. So we've provided, that's going to go to White Engineering. They'll review that, comment back to the Conservation Commission, hopefully. We'll go forward with that. So we're pretty close to that. Selectment, we have not submitted yet. We'll have to be getting approval for historic. This is about 1950s era building that's proposed to be removed. Erosion control.
That needs select board approval? Historic preservation.
Historic.
Preservation.
To demolish the
The existing
Structure. That's 60 years old? Yeah.
Yeah, I think you said
Right, I mean, well, then we Exactly, then we determined whether it's significant. So it's 50, 50 is the cutoff point, 50 years? Right. I forgot that.
There is erosion control shown on the plan here. It's what this yellow line is, so this whole entire, entire area will be cut off by erosion control. That control, erosion control is a fabric fence plus a straw bale backing, which is about the best one you can put up for halting anything going through. So that's stormwater.
Top of the bank there?
It's, yes, it's off of the steep section.
Keep it, okay.
Right, so if you remember where this wall was
Yes.
Or just beyond it.
Yeah.
And it was still
Just down
Still flat.
Keeps it from going down
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, yep. So this is all, we call it S3, so that's the plastic fencing with the straw bale backing. When they do install the walkway, that's proposed to have wattles. Those are the round straw bale. And then also wattles at the clearing area down here. There is two, there is some debris on the site, just tree debris that's proposed to be removed. There's a pile of logs in this location. There's a large white pine that sits about that long to, comes up into here. Those are supposed to be removed and those can get picked off without really disturbing any any substantial grades. So your LPOD checklist. Any construction being done any closer to mean high water? No, the existing house is 71 feet to mean high water to corner of the deck here. 71 feet from this point to the closest part, which is the deck here. Any septic systems, yes. This is the only place that we can put it. So it is in the LP, here's the LPOD line right here. So as much as we can, we're got it this way, but we have a we have conflicts with the retaining wall, trying to keep the retaining wall as far as away from property line as possible. So it's approximately 115 feet to the bleaching chamber, which is C, but it's like right, the end of it's right there. Existing lot coverage is 4% with the existing house. And the new lot coverage will be 10%. So that's meets zoning. Cutting in the LPOD, yes, we are cutting it. But conforming to, this is the only place that's cutting within the 35 feet. Otherwise, we're about 50 feet back to the wall. So this would be the only area. And that's being done under 6.5.9D. Is alternative cutting plan proposed? Yes, there's a plan that's proposed here. That's featured on it. And so we're, yes, there is a plan. Is cutting outside 35-foot area will be replaced with native species? The lake access will be cut in accordance with 6.5.0D. Excavation in the LPOD, is there, are there any changes being made to roadways and driveways? The existing driveway comes to here and we are proposing to extend it. The house is proposed with a garage in this area right here. So this would be, come in and they can pull in back and and drive out of the site without backing out onto Hawthorne Road. Soil removal, no. Any demolition being done? Yes, the existing house will be removed from site. So that's the site plan. Proposed, this is LPOD section. Existing house is 6.4.64% of the LPOD. And the new house coverage will be 11.1% of the LPOD. And we're still retaining 80% of the site as vegetation. Yours is, I guess, so that we're greater than the 75% that's required. I can give you if you want to see what the thing looks like. It is an interesting building. This is self-oriented on it.
Looks like a Russian oligarch yacht.
That's, that's not, that's not a good comment.
Sorry, sorry. I couldn't help myself. Strike that.
I agree. Anyways, this is the lakeside. So this is the garage area. This is garage area, this is the entry door. And they have a, an exercise room off to the side. Second floor is this here, is a concrete structure with glass facade, basically. This is the second floor. This is built on, is proposed to be built on concrete piers, concrete slab construction on top of the concrete piers. Second floor, concrete pier is going through. There is other major structural pieces that come up through the, through the building. Same thing, concrete floor on the second floor. Concrete's not exposed, it's all clad with wood on the inside. The outside of the building is what's called a GFRC. That's a glass, glass fiber reinforced concrete shell. And it's it's not, it's not a weatherproof struck outside, so the roof, all the siding is this GFRC. And that is the rain will actually go through it to a structure down below it. So they're building a concrete structure. They put a framework and then they put this cladding on the outside of it.
What color will it be? Gray.
Murat, are you on here?
Yes, I'm online.
There you go, there's, Murat is the architect on the project. Color of the GFRC?
Gray colored.
Basically concrete?
Basically concrete, yes. We do have renderings that shows the intended color.
Starts with grayish, beige.
Yeah, we have a, we have a rendering, I can show you that, but it'll be a grayish
Yeah.
Color. We do have a rendering that should show, it shows that what conceptually it's going to look like from, from the water. So this is the backside, nobody's going to see it from the backside because there's ledge that comes to about that high on the backside anyways, just behind, just behind the house. So right, all of this area right here is exposed ledge. And it goes up about 10 feet behind the house. This is, this is side views. The trees are approximate, so, you know, the trees are still going to be taller than this building. So it's going to be sitting down inside trees.
Except that you've cut them down first.
But we're not cutting all of them down.
Okay.
The ones that are still standing on anywhere around it, they're 60 to 70-foot trees.
Okay.
So we have a structure that's less than 35 feet tall. What if I get into tell you the render? I think you have a rendering.
Uh, Mark?
Hopefully that's not it.
I can share if you
Is this, Mark, question for you, this is by the same architect, is this kind of the idea of the, of the
The flag? Yes.
I can share screen if you, if you like, we can share the renderings. If possible.
Can you share the screen?
To show us what?
The renderings.
Oh yeah, sure.
Hello, everyone, my name is Murat Mutlu. I'm the architect for the project.
Hello, welcome.
Daniel, Daniel is the owner.
Hi, everyone, I'm Daniel Pincus, nice to meet you.
Hi.
Hi, Daniel.
Forgive my comment about Russian oligarchs.
Indeed.
I couldn't help myself, given what's going on.
Kate, are you able to, are you the host?
Yeah.
No.
No, Jennifer.
Jennifer's the host, begin.
Oh, yeah?
Or whoever.
I'm not able to share screen, but
This is what, this is
Try sharing your screen now.
Okay.
There you go.
Great.
This will be much better than an eight and a half by eleven. And this, this rendering is actually depicts the actual trees that are on there. So they took the trees that were remaining in here, placed them on here. So this is actually pretty accurate.
But some of those trees are going to come down.
I think this is depicting that.
There it is.
Yeah.
This is a view from the lake. And that is the aerial view.
Yeah.
It's an aerial, but you can see the density of the trees that'll be in front of it.
Okay.
Mark, is there any provisions to keep those trees up after we approve this plan? Like five years from now, can they cut those trees down?
They're in, they're in your 35-foot setback, no.
Okay, so they can, those trees need to stay forever?
Everything that's, everything that's being left is being left as is, yeah.
Not for now, for while they build it?
Yep.
Yeah, and that will be
Afterwards, this is what you're approving with the existing trees remaining in place.
Remain, okay.
If they want to take trees down, they
They got to
At least have to get back to the Conservation Commission then.
Thank you.
Because you're within 100 feet and 200 feet
Right.
According to the weapons bylaw.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes. So that's pretty close to what you have, you can see pretty much everything here. You have a dock.
Mark, can you tell me what you said you were going to do about that opening down by the dock? The only lawn they have down by the Yeah, you, you said something and I didn't understand what it was.
Pretty well. There's not a lot, we're not cutting any large vegetation down there.
But you said something about the soil? Or did you not say that?
I'm just saying that we're not, I said that we're not going to disturb the soil.
Oh, that's what you said, okay, thank you.
Removing whatever we can and putting, creating it with a grass surface where we can create a grass surface.
Removing the vegetation.
Remove of some shrubs that are there, mostly honeysuckle.
No soil, no changing of the soil, okay, gotcha.
No soil removal. Minimize disturbance.
Okay, I wasn't clear on what you said.
So that's, that's this area here, and this depicts it pretty well because this is, this is on ledge. The shoreline is actually ledge, and then out of the water, it's safe, there's actually a sand base to the lake there. And then that showed the walls, the house, and so it's pretty close to what you're going to see most of the year
Thank you.
From the lake.
Anything else, Mark, you want to add to this?
Nope.
I had a question.
Thank you.
I had a question.
Yeah, please.
I know, you answered a lot of the questions that I had earlier written down. So you answered them, but I noticed that there's a propane tank buried.
Proposed to be a propane tank out in front, we have a little bit of an area right here.
Is it proposed or there's one there?
It's proposed, it's a proposed propane tank, yes.
Oh, okay, and is that within the 35 feet of the
No.
Okay.
No.
I couldn't tell by the picture that I'm looking at.
Mark, I have a question about the height. It looks like it's close to 35 feet high. And I'm trying to sort of wrap myself around.
The lowest, the lowest spot? Yeah, the lowest spot is down in south, southwest corner at the garage. So if you're looking at that structure right there, right where the arrow is, that will be the lowest spot. And I've actually worked with Murat to adjust the height of the building. So it is no higher than 35 feet. So that's from that lowest spot, six feet outside the building to the crest of the house.
So from where, so from where I have my cursor?
Yeah.
Right.
That is, that is, we're just below 35 feet up there, yes.
On the basement level to the roof is 34 feet.
Could I finish my question, please? And then from the, I'm trying to understand. So this, what we're looking at, this picture I'm showing here right now, this is from the lake, correct?
That is lakes, that's from the lake view, yes.
And then this here would be from the property to the north? This would be from the north view?
To the east, to the east, yes, to the east. That's facing the back, the backside to Silver Property.
Right.
That's basically, you're not going to see that because it's ledge. There's about 10 feet of ledge there. So you won't see that facade.
What about the, the property, the Silver Property?
Silver Property possibly will see the top of this building, but probably only the second floor of the roof line.
So Kate, can we get back to my question?
Sure.
He was answering my question.
Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I wanted to know how far from the water line that propane tank will be buried.
That is 90 feet.
Okay, thank you.
So I had the same question, Nancy. So the, the propane tank, is that, that whole area there is a wetlands area? Is it along the border with the property to the, to the south, the White Pines Beach?
It's, say, say that again, sorry.
Is the propane tank, how close to the property border is the propane, propane tank, tank being buried?
About 10 feet off the property line.
Other questions? Anyone? If anybody's on, on the, in the meeting by Zoom, if you have questions, abutters, anybody?
Yeah, we're not exact, this is Peter Strauss. We live at Nine Oak Street, not exactly in the butter. But I just wanted to say I am really impressed by what I've seen of the plans in terms of preserving vegetation and preserving trees, not to mention architectural distinction, which is there. I don't know how it happened, but the Conservation Commission permitted three houses to be built side by side at the other end of the lake from us without a single bit of screening in front of them. And they are really an eyesore. This house is going to be very different from that. If, at least if they follow the plans that they have submitted, you'll hardly know that it's there.
Have to follow the plans that are submitted.
Yeah.
You better follow the plans that are submitted.
The plans will be followed.
It's what we're supposed to do.
Yeah.
Or the project's supposed to do.
Okay, thank you for that comment. Anybody else?
Yeah, I would just, unless somebody.
Chairman?
Who's that?
Chairman, may I speak? This is Jamie Manassi from the Conservation Commission.
Go ahead.
Can we?
Thank you. And I'm just coming as a neutral Stockbridge resident. And, but I wanted to clarify that as the Conservation Commission, we haven't quite approved the project. And there are 61 large trees to be removed. And, um, you know, that's all I wanted to say was just a clarification that we're waiting for the report from the engineers. Also, projects do get approved and sometimes we can't always control what people do after the approval happens. We do not have a conservation agent who can, can, you know, look after certain projects. So it's something we all have to work on together. So that's all I have to say and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Kate, can you take down the screen sharing, please?
Yes, I can.
And Wayne, you had a point, a question?
Just a point. I'm in, you know, I'm in favor of people basically being able to do what they want with their, with their property. But in, in this instance, I think every single boundary has been pushed to the very nth degree. Every piece of it, the walls, the septic, the house itself, the lot coverage. And just in the spirit of the bylaw, I think it would have been nice if you had it just inside our parameters instead of right at the edge of them. You're within the parameters. So does it, does it fit? And does it, is it fit the by, yes, it does. I would just, would have appreciated, I think, just inside of our absolute maximums would have been a nice gesture.
So I actually feel that the impact of this project is significant. And I disagree that in looking at the, the numbers for the LPOD, my understanding is that, I mean, really, my concerns are bigger than, than this, than the numbers in the LPOD. But my understanding is that the coverage should be 10%. And, but my main concern is, is really the impact of, of this project in terms of the surrounding community and just the character of the area. I would need to know, have more information on the blasting and impacts of blasting to neighboring properties. And, you know, what the legal ramifications of, of that from the town standpoint would be. I know, Mark, you indicated at the site visit that the fire chief and others would need to review it. But I would need more information on that going into this. And then just the scale to me seems enormous for outsized in relation to the size of the lot. I'm also concerned about all this, this glass. We, we lose 1 billion birds a year just to, you know, bird strike against glass alone. And 50% of that, that loss is, is from, from residential homes. So my concerns are, are significant here. And I would want to see a lesser impact in terms of, of what happens on this, on this property.
Excuse me, can I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Lori Richmond. I live on Oak Street. I'm in a butter. And I'm curious about how much blasting would be done.
So so far, the question that was assumed is that ledge will be removed by blasting. And that's not, that's just an assumption. The amount of ledge removal could be done by a hydraulic hammer on an excavator. If they do blasting, they'll have to take surveys of all the properties surrounding that. They had, there's certain blasting protocol that has to be adhered to during the building, construction phase of this. So they'd have to go through building inspector, fire department. And there's a certain protocol. So they'd have to have a survey of the surrounding buildings. They take photos. They note that there's cracked foundations or there's not. So it's, it's very detailed. And the blasting that's done these days is quite precise. But just saying that, it doesn't probably make anybody feel better. But it doesn't necessarily, it's not necessarily blasting. There will be, ledge removal have to be done. It all depends on the extent of ledge removal to get this. So the, but the lower floor is, is basement area and an exercise room and the, and the entry to the house. And then everything else will be above grade. So that's going to be a fairly small area that'll have to be excavated out. So.
Will there be any protection for me, since I'm right next door, in terms of the blasting or ledge removal? And what impact that may have on the foundation of my property? As well as any water irrigation that doesn't work right, whatever, that ends up, again, on my property? That could hurt the foundation of my property?
Blasting would have to be done, as I said, in accordance with Massachusetts regulation for blasting. That may incorporate a matting system that goes over the blasting. They would have to make a survey of your foundation to make sure what is the existing condition? Make it existing, then make a determination afterwards, do the same survey again to see if anything has changed. As I said, it's, it's a precise method of removal of ledge. And people that do it have to do it in accordance with regulations.
Will I be notified, will I be notified when that happens?
Absolutely, yes. Yes, that typically that is protocol of the blasting system. And we can make that as a condition with the contractor that they notify you that that is, you know, here's, here's when we're removing ledge. Here's the method that we're doing it. So we can communicate that with you.
Thank you.
The project.
Are, are you the direct abutter on the lakefront there?
I, I am, correct.
Yeah.
That's close.
Thank you.
Are you, Mrs. Richmond, are you to the north of the property? Are you to the west of the property?
North.
I'm not on the White Pine side, I'm on the other side.
To the north, I'm, I'm.
I'm on the north side.
Thank you.
And how many feet is there between their house and my property line?
51, 51.2 feet. And there'll still be, there'll still be existing trees remaining between your, your property line and the house. There's also a bunch of smaller trees to be planted in that area. They're all going to be four to five feet in size. So they're not going to create a, what's planting, being planted isn't going to be any risk to your house. But they'll, it's going to take them a long time to grow.
Right, only because that house will be way above my house because of the nature of where it's sitting.
Yes, yes, that's true.
Thank you.
So in response to Wayne's comment, yes, it's, you know, this, this is pushing to it. But it's, if you want things to change, you're going to have to change zoning for that. I mean, if you're, if, if, you know, 10% of lot coverage, you know, I've, I've heard this in numerous projects. It's too big for the lot. That's zoning.
Right.
Not really, you know, it's not LPOD.
Mark, this is a special permit. The board has discretionary input, please.
It's, it's discretionary, but you have 15%. You can allow, you can allow up to 15%. We're below that 11.1.
It's 10%.
Zoning, zoning is 10%. There's a greater, your LPOD district doesn't cover the entire lot, so.
Right, but if you look at, if you look at section 6.5.3, it's very clear. And it reads, the LPOD is an overlay district mapped over other districts. Where, where there is an inconsistency between the requirements of section 6.5 and the regulations otherwise applicable in such other districts, the more restrictive provision shall be deemed to apply. And that's 10% in the R4 district, which this is in.
Which this is complying with.
Right.
We're complying with 10%.
What is the 11, what is the 11.1?
So.
I don't understand.
LPOD, LPOD only covers 150 feet from the water. So this whole section over here is outside of the LPOD. So there's a greater lot coverage. So the lot, the lot is, the lot size is 37,750 square feet. And the house is 3,775 square feet. It's 10%.
Okay.
So we need the R2, the R4 zoning, R4, excuse me. So we're meeting it. But see, this, the LPOD is a smaller area. So you have a larger, the house takes up more of the LPOD, but it's a smaller area.
All right. Thank you.
If, if, I'm sorry, if I may, my name is Vicky Donahue and I'm an attorney at Kennebourn and Myers here on behalf of the applicant. I also want to point out that I understand the concern about the impact in terms of going up to the line of what's allowed. And I understand Kate's concern about that. I do agree with Mark that, you know, the bylaw is the bylaw. And so that's what's there. If you want to change that, then there needs to be a change in the zoning. I do want to point out again that in section 6.5.6, then it reads that the planning board shall approve a special permit for any building, structure or land use activity within the LPOD if it finds that the building, structure or land use activity meets all the application and site plan requirements set forth in 6.3 and 6.5.8 and the applicable land use and development standards in 6.5.9. I think if you look at the application and what Mark has presented, then all of those criteria have been met. So I think that the, you know, I, I understand the concern about the extent of the development here. But it is in keeping with the bylaw and the bylaw itself, by its words under 6.5.7, says that the planning board shall approve the special permit if they meet those requirements.
So I'll just comment on that. What our town council has told us is that, and I have it in writing, is that, given that this is a special permit, the board has discretionary input. What they need to do is they need to be careful, you know, when they're making a decision, that they tie their decisions to wording, wording in the bylaw. So we're, I think we're just going to have to, to agree to disagree on, on what a special permit entails.
Any other comments from the public or questions from the board?
Oh.
Sorry, Gary.
No, that's fine. I would just like to weigh in and say that I'm concerned about the, the 61 trees that are being cut, especially the very tall ones. The blasting that Mark mentions, I understand that it would be monitored. But if it was my house and I didn't have a crack in my foundation and then I did, you know, that's kind of a tough thing to accept, I guess I would say, for the, for the abutters.
Don't have to accept it.
Well, no, I know, but I'm just, you know, I'm just trying to put myself in, in their, in their position.
But to that point, Gary, just, this thought occurred to me when we were talking about blasting. If a crack is detected where none was before the blasting in a, in a neighboring foundation, does the contract with the blaster require that the, that foundation be made whole at the cost, at the expense of the blaster? How is that?
I'm not, I'm not clear on that. Vicky, do you have anything?
I don't think, I don't think it's just that the contractor has to. You have the applicant who is, who is engaging in this development. So they've said, okay, I'm going to build this. They hire a contractor and then the applicant is responsible for any damage that occurs. So that's where they would go, going back and saying, you know, you've done the survey before, you do the survey after. If there's damage, then you would try to find a causal relationship and say, that's the cause of it. And so there's been some damage.
So my concern is that it now sounds to me like it becomes a problem of the abutters. And that does not seem like an ideal approach of a planning board. So, you know, my preference would be to, to. So, you know, my preference would be to to, I mean, to check with our town council. I mean, my real preference would be that this project be scaled back, but I think it would be, you know, blasting damage is a serious thing. I'd want to know more about that.
Is there some way that I could be protected since I am an abutter? Can it be written somewhere that that they will take the responsibility for any type of damage that occurs to my house?
I think we could perhaps make it a condition of the special permit that any any blasting damage that is clearly a result of blasting, pre and post photographs of the foundation, the pre photograph shows no cracks, the post blasting photograph show cracks, are the is the responsibility financially of either the blasting company or the owner of the property. I think it should be clear and should be in writing somewhere. I agree with that.
I would appreciate I would appreciate that.
And I would suspect, and I don't know this, but I would suspect that in the state regulations and in that language, that there is
I believe so.
I I believe there's language that
It has to be.
That exactly describes what you're saying, and I don't know if it needs to be a condition by us, but I certainly maybe verify that it's in there because I I would suspect that it is.
I don't I don't know the regulations, but I would assume that also.
Yeah.
And that would be something that the building inspector would be having jurisdiction over and that he would have the enforcement ability with respect to the the blasting.
And will someone in the on the planning board check to see if that actually is the case?
That's the building inspector. He's the enforcement.
If you want to cover it, you could make it a condition, I believe.
Yeah, I think I
I would be more comfortable if it was a condition.
Yeah, I think Wayne's right. I can't imagine that a crack in a neighboring foundation, which is clearly caused by blasting of this for this house, is the responsibility of the person who owns the cracked foundation.
We should also say of a well.
That makes no sense.
We should also say of a well, damage to a well.
Damage to a well.
Right, I have a well also, which could be impacted.
So logically, it it makes no sense that if your property is damaged by blasting next door, that it's your problem to fix, to pay for, and, you know, we can
I agree. Condition. I totally agree, so I would appreciate it if it's in there somewhere as a condition so that I hope nothing happens, but in the case that it does, I don't want to have any kind of issue in terms of who's going to pay for the damage.
Right, I get it.
So I would appreciate it if it's in there as a condition.
It'll be it'll be difficult to determine a condition like that because it's all causal, so that's why, as Mark described, then you have the the procedure of doing a survey before and during doing a survey after so that those facts are established. But in terms of, you know, the responsibility for that, it all lies with what that what those facts are, so
Right.
Excuse me, if if your next door neighbor, if you have a solid foundation and your next door neighbor starts blasting and you have a crack in your foundation, I don't think there's any question about what caused it. I mean, let's be real here.
Thank you.
What? Yes, and then
Mark, if this project were downsized, is there any way there wouldn't be blasting?
No, I think you're not going to change. Yep, I don't think you'd you'd still be probably blasting. I mean, you could you could shorten the height of the building possibly.
Or the
That would avoid it, but the whole site is
Is the whole site
Is a ledge. It's it's it's
Drilling is not going to be a possibility if
No, I think there is is methods, other methods in blasting, so they can drill and split, they can hammer it out. This Wayne's got
But the size of the the size of it downsizing isn't going to help.
It 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 could, depends not it depends on another design.
A little less plastic.
Mark, would you be willing to do it?
Okay, Wayne had his hand up. Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do you know if the normal course of action is to do the survey in any blasting situation?
Yes.
So that that is a normal course of action. They will have to do that. Would they have to do that with with the hammering too?
Doesn't matter, not necessarily the hammering, but it doesn't matter whether you're a mile out in the woods, you still have to go through blasting.
Survey.
Survey, yeah. So, you know, they still have to go through the protocol for for blasting.
But that's not my concern. I understand that I will be notified. I'm concerned about what happens if there is a problem, that it will be the responsibility of either the company who's doing the blasting, the whatever they're however they're doing it, or Daniel. So that it doesn't become my responsibility, and if we could settle this in your conditions, it then makes it very clean.
I think this is this this really, in my mind, it's something that should be worked out between Daniel, property owner, and yourself, and the protocol for for blasting, but I don't think, and you guys might disagree with me, but I don't think this is LPOD.
Well, I'm not sure who it is. I just am trying to protect myself.
It's 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 true. It's a process.
And it's true.
It's a process through the building inspector that they have to go through, and I am I'd be quite sure that all the protocol is there to protect you.
Well, I think we should know before proceeding, we should we should have the information so that we're making an informed decision here.
Thank you.
I would I would recommend touching base with town council as the next step so that this the abutters are protected. We've got wells here at stake as well.
And they're proposing to drill a new well on this site also, so they have to protect their own well because the well has to go in prior to the house and the blasting.
Right, but they don't have it they don't have an existing well that they're worried about.
They will have.
They will have, though. They will have one installed. It'll likely be installed prior to any ledge excavation. I'm not going to use the word blasting because, as I said, it doesn't necessarily have to be blasting.
They're the they're the applicants, Mark, here. I think as a as a board, we we also need to to look at for the interests of people of abutting properties.
So it's excavation that you're talking about, is that within the LPOD that we're talking about tonight?
So the LPOD gets into is any soils being removed from the site? No, there is soils being brought in for the septic system, the infiltration area, and for foundation drainage, but there's nothing really specific in the LPOD regarding ledge excavation. I mean, I just
And I think
I'm not it's I don't think it's something to get we can get hung up on here, but it's not really under LPOD. It's a protocol that you have to go through with the building inspector. I would absolutely, and
Oh, I'm just going to read from the purpose of the LPOD if I may, and it is the Logan Pond Overlay District is intended to protect and enhance the principal lake fronts and shorelines of the town of Stockbridge to maintain safe and healthful conditions to prevent and control water pollution and to preserve habitat, vegetative cover, and natural beauty. And I would say that safe and safe and healthful conditions are are included there.
Oh, well, I had a couple other things before we got going on the other thing, but the other thing I wanted to just bring up is that under findings in 6.3.6C, it says will not be detrimental to adjacent uses or to the established or future character of the neighborhood. And I think this definitely may be an issue given in that findings piece.
Is that LPOD though?
Yeah, well, it's under findings, which is 6.1.
Gary, I I agree with you there. I mean, you know, we have some aesthetic, rather vague, but aesthetic of briefs that we're supposed to, you know, pay attention to, and how we do that, I'm not quite sure. But the fact of the matter is, I personally look at this project, I feel it's too big, it's egregious, and and I know the renderings are are lovely and and indicate that everything's going to be loved beautifully screened, but I think that's a lie. And 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 I I I I think this is, you know, we're talking about a classic view of the ball, and we're going to be looking at this for the rest of our lives. So and it's a big it's a big thing.
And then but with that said, so I can just finish my thought.
Sure.
Is that some of this that we're talking about really lands squarely in the select boards' bailiwick. So I just think it's important that they know of our concerns.
Like blasting.
Well, with the blasting
Yeah.
This the just the scope and the character of the neighborhood versus what's proposed. These are the things that they can really weigh in on because they're going to be doing a special permit. We're we're talking about the LPOD and the soils and the land and all that piece, but it it all ties in, you know, so it's we're we're still looking out for the best uses for the town, and we're also looking out for the the abutters. So I mean, that's that's why we're here. And so I just think that, you know, those things need to be taken into consideration as well.
Right, and the the purpose of our bylaw also speaks to the environment and preserving habitat, and this is right right on a wetland area.
And I also know that the, you know, the the Conservation Commission has not finished their deliberations either, so I'd almost be willing to wait till they were done with their deliberations before we continued any further.
I mean, I don't feel I need to wait for conservation. I just feel this is this is out of character with the surrounding area, and it's a very visible spot. The lake is a public good. I I want you, you know, I don't I want you to have have a lovely home. This is sort of a a difficult place for me to be. It's not my comfort zone, but I I do think that it can be done differently. I I recognize it's a challenge challenging piece of land, and I think in many ways you've got an excellent start in terms of the shape of the building, the way you've situated it. My concern is with, you know, the amount of glass, the concrete, and then is this going to, you know, tower over the Richmond's property and over the lake, frankly? And we, you know, and this is unfortunately a history that is not part of you, but over and over again, we've seen these requests come before the board. Everything looks great, you know, trees will be preserved, and then, you know, boom, construction starts and the trees are all gone, and, you know, the ready wall goes up and it's like, you know, it looks like an Atlantic breakwater, and it's just, you know, we've seen these these very significant discrepancies, and and I'm wondering if you would consider doing a balloon test so that we really know what the impact to the surrounding area is going to be. This is not good for there's another place in our region where you can see an example of a property that towers over the neighboring property, and I've been told that the property that is on the receiving end of this discrepancy in terms of height has had its property value reduced, you know, very significantly, and so it's not good for a town to have the property values reduced by projects. And I do feel that you can do something that is 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 extraordinary and wonderful without impacting abutters' property values and quality of life, and and I'm wondering if if you guys would consider doing a balloon test so we know exactly where the height of that building is going to be in relation to the surrounding area.
Sure, I I I've never heard of a balloon test, but I imagine we suspend a balloon, we fly a balloon up to the to the roof height of the building. Is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah, and that just, you know, gives us a sense of what this thing will, you know, where it's going to be, and so that, you know, everybody knows.
Again, that's not really an LPOD issue.
It is.
That's a that's a select board issue.
No, you can certainly request that.
I would ask to know precisely what it is our purview is here right now with LPOD. What exactly are we responsible for here right now tonight?
In terms of making a decision?
Right. What exactly is our area of concern with LPOD? I'm not sure of it myself, and that's why I want to clarify what exactly is that we have to make a decision on.
I think that, as Mark said, I think he's right, that this complies with LPOD requirements in our bylaws.
And it's strictly the LPOD coverage, as I understand it.
Yeah. I mean, we may, it might be regrettable that trees behind the house are coming down or that, you know, that the building is, you know, should be 400 square feet smaller or some, but I'm not sure we have the the authority within the bylaws to to demand that.
If if we if Mark has covered all of, you know, our requirements, we I still like Gary's opinion that we should tell the selectmen how we feel about the project so that when it comes to their their approving, what they have to approve, they understand that we have concerns, not LPOD concerns, but concerns with the project if they need to if they need to approve the overall thing and whatever it is that they have to approve. I think that was a very good I think that was a very good suggestion because it may be that we, you know, you have fulfilled these requirements, but I I do think it's important that we let people know we have concerns.
I I believe in special permits, and I'm not sure it's not, I don't think in an overlay district it kicks in, but in a special permit, Jeffrey might be able to punch in on that, that they do request comments from
Yeah.
All departments, so
So my suggestion would be is that we we forward our our concerns to the select board.
Yes.
And Mark, could you just clarify, the 61 trees that are going to be taken down, are any of those in the LPOD?
Well, many of them are, yeah.
Okay.
None of them within, so you have a 35 foot no pot zone. So we're pretty much preserving everything within 50 feet.
Yeah.
And then really, the 61 trees are in the house site
Yeah.
And in the septic site.
Right.
So it's
It's all
All of you are on the site. It's a heavily wooded site. Is are a lot of trees to be taken down? Yes, but you're still going to have a canopy, and, you know, once this is approved, you're approving this plan. That's the plan that the contractor and the owner is responsible. The endpoint is the owner, it's responsible that this plan is implemented. If there's a change in this plan, that's a violation, and that is, you know, building inspector or some sort of a control that you have to say that the plan was implemented. Typically, our language is substantially in accordance with the plan. Conservation Commission has, if we propose, you know, X amount of trees to be planted, the Weather Protection Act says that 75% of those plants have to be there in three years' time. You know, they could make it, they could make that 80% if they want to put that into a condition. You could do the same thing, I'm assuming. But, you know, the implementation, if if projects are being done and they're not being done in accordance with the plan, that's it's the owner's responsibility and the contractors, but it's also the town of administering the permit that was issued and following through and saying, you can't cut these trees down. So, you know, we're representing what we can represent. I can't I can't tell you that the contractor's not going to cut down a tree. This is the this is the plan. This was approved. This is what you have to follow. Put tree protection fencing Put tree, uh, protection fencing up to protect the trees that are going to be there. The erosion control does that to extent it has a, a work limit. Um, for specific, you know, if you want to say, okay, the trees that are shown on here, most of them were flagged out on the site. Not all of those trees were going to be cut because it was revised. They cut it back. So we can do that if you want to have that and have, I, I don't know how you would do it, whether you designate somebody from your board or you say, you know, Ned has to follow and follow up on it. But the thing of, uh, somebody saying, well, geez, you, we, uh, approved that plan and then you just did this, that's, that's the town really following up on the program.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's under Wetlands Protection Act, LPOD zoning. It's all this, they're all have to, you're presenting something, this is what's going to be. Like, I don't have any control once this goes to, uh, you know, a contractor, you know, it's not, I'm presenting what we have come together, the architects, the attorneys, foresight. Um, this is what's being presented. You can speculate all those trees are going to die. Well, you don't know that. Why, why are we making that assumption? Um, I think the depiction from the lake, I think is quite clear for most of the year. With the tree, with the leaves off, you might see more of that, more of that structure, but there's not as many people out at the lake either. So the majority of the year, you're not going to see a heck of a lot of that house. So I think, you know, it's, it's a follow-up and the LPOD, I think you're covering LPOD. It's not the underlying zoning, that selectmen. So that's, I guess, I don't have to go any farther.
Yeah.
So I hear the concerns. I, I understand.
I guess the question is, it relates to your question, Wayne, about what we are supposed to do. I suppose one way is to, uh, vote on it as an LPOD, um, application tonight. Yes or no? And then, um, record our concerns and convey those to the select board who will have authority over things like blasting and the well and, and.
The house.
The house and, um, all the things that they normally look at. That's.
Oh, Bill, I just, you know, I've had this conversation, if I may, I've had this conversation with Patrick and the select board's, uh, jurisdiction is very limited. Um, it's limited to the, to the footprint and the setbacks. So if you want to, my understanding, um, is that if you want to address concerns, they should be addressed now. And this is a special permit and I have right in front of me wording from town council that says, I'll read it. When a zoning bylaw directs a special permit granting authority to consider neighborhood character as part of its decision-making process, the board is authorized to deny a special permit if the application doesn't meet the criteria. And it goes on to cite case law. So I, you know, that's, that's, that's my input on that. I think it would be better to get answers to some of these questions, um, the blasting and, and some of these other, um, concerns, um, before, before voting on this.
How does everybody feel about that?
I think we could get our piece done.
I think we should too.
Yep.
And with, but if we can forward comments and suggestions, I think that's a smart thing to do. It's, it's asked for in the bylaw.
And, and there, uh, the select board meeting is open to the public, including us and abutters' and any other interested parties. So these issues can be raised with them as well directly. I'm not saying we shouldn't necessarily forward, uh, a list of, of comments or concerns, but to me, I think we can, we have the information that makes this doable from a LPOD special permit.
If it's strictly that piece that we're talking about.
Yeah. And so blasting's a big issue, but I don't think it's our issue. I think.
Is it the selectmen's issue? Is it for sure or is it strictly footprint and boundary line? I mean, if, if, if they have the discretion under a special permit to, to ask those questions and base a decision on that, I would say that's the place for it.
I mean.
I think it brings you back to the findings, which we will have to go through, you know?
I, I agree that, uh, that's, it could result, you know, that a blasting dispute about a broken foundation could be litigated, but I, I have to believe that the state has rules in place.
Oh, and I, I would.
For, uh, how to remedy, uh, foundation damage after blasting among abutters'.
That would be one of my suggestions for the selectmen, since it's not ours.
Yep.
To say, could you make sure that there's language that protects abutters' in state regulations for blasting?
See, it's going to be the selectmen's thing. So just to be clear, we're here strictly for an LPOD decision?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the application. Are there any other comments from the public, from the applicant or advisors or any members of the board before we proceed to vote?
Can I just add a comment about blasting and size of the area? Uh, our basement is only 1,200 square feet.
1.1.
Part of that is level with the grade and part of it would be excavated. So the amount of excavation area for the basement is less than 3% of the site area. So it's, it's, it's not a huge area in relation to the entire site. And, uh, in the second floor, sort of the, the living area, the first floor of the house is elevated. So I think in sections you can see that there's sort of a deck and the, and build at the first floor, there's an underlying space below it. So we also don't want to, you know, excavate rock. It's expensive, so we have no reason to extensively excavate. There's no benefit to the, to the owner. So it's, uh, we talked through it during the planning process and minimized it to, uh, to the basement area, the excavation. And then there was a comment about bird friendliness for the glass. Given that we have a ledge behind the house on the first floor, we don't really see an issue, like a see-through condition for birds. And on the upper floors, we have a glazed condition where we have bedroom walls. So that really technically is not a problem for birds. Birds really, uh, like bird-friendly glass is necessary when there's sort of a see-through condition where you have glass to glass in a room. But in our case, uh, the building's quite screened with the ledge and, and the trees. So there's no issue for like a, there's no creation of a see-through transparency. If that is a concern, we can entertain the idea of using, uh, bird-friendly glass. So that's certainly an option, but I don't think professionally, I don't think we have an issue on this side with, uh, I guess, birds hitting the glass.
Did you use the term bird-friendly glass?
Yes.
What is that?
Uh, so this is a new, uh, so cities have started requiring it. New York City has required it lately. Basically you make, uh, sort of a pattern on the glass, a brick pattern or ceramic pattern that the birds can see so that the birds realize that there is, it's not a see-through condition. There's an object that, there's a reflection to them.
You can see it.
And then, and then there's also other technology with UV filters you put in, in between two glass panels that the birds can see, but human can't see. So it, it adds to the glass cost, but it, it certainly helps reflecting, uh, you know, bouncing birds back from getting close to buildings.
Is that what's prepared? Is that what's planning to be put in? The bird-friendly glass?
I professionally don't think it's a necessity in this condition because of this natural screening around the house. If this was in an open area where, uh, you could sort of, it's really a problem when there's glass and then there's room and then glass behind it so that the birds, when there's no reflection in the sky, uh, the birds can't perceive that there's glass so they just hit the, hit the transparent surface. So, uh, in our case, we have glass, room, and then bedroom walls, or we have the ledge and the trees in the back on the first floor. So it's really, we don't have that see-through condition, in my opinion. But if this becomes a requirement, we can entertain this idea and we can, uh, you know, discuss with the ownership and see if that's an option for them as part of this.
Okay. Do we want to put a list together now of not, of.
Concerns.
Concerns to be expressed to the, um, select board? One is blasting.
Yeah.
And the effect on, on foundations and wells. Uh, one.
Liability issue.
Yeah, the liability. Who, who pays? Um, what else?
Gary had a.
Scale, visual impact.
Yeah.
I had, um, I mean, I.
I would second Carl's, um, comment about scale in relation to the size of the lot and visual impact to the surrounding area.
Yeah, I think if we could just mention, uh, 6.3.6C will not be detrimental to adjacent uses or to the established or future character of the neighborhood. They would have to wrestle with that a little more than, than we do.
We would, yeah.
Which probably that takes into consideration the scope.
Right.
Block coverage. You know?
Yeah.
Characterization.
Yep. Anything else?
Uh, well, I would add wells and foundations.
Right, right. I've got that.
Okay. And.
I would add the, um, the ready rock walls, the cement, concrete walls.
What's the issue there?
Um, they are, they tend to have, um, a very industrial, um, sort of like gray infrastructure appearance. Um, it's contemporary, but, um, I don't feel that it's in character with this area. I mean, we can certainly put that as a condition, require plantings that cover them. But if you're not, if you're not understanding that this bylaw is something where you can put conditions, um, then I don't know what to say.
Well, the plan calls for plantings on the, on the walls.
We understand that you could do conditions on this, but yeah, it is proposed that there's plantings on the walls. Yes.
So it's, it's, and we're approving this plan.
Right.
If we approve it.
Yeah.
So I think, I think that's covered.
I think the bird-friendly glasses is an interesting point.
Yeah, I think that's worth.
And, uh, the other thing I wanted to mention is that if you do blast or if you do, uh, hydraulic hammer, um, the bylaw doesn't allow you to take the, off the site.
Soil.
The, uh.
Rock.
The resulting rock.
Right.
Because we had that on Oak Street.
Yeah.
We, we can probably absorb the amount that's there that, that I think we can make that work on site, yes.
How are you going to make that work, Mark?
There is fill required for the septic system and the infiltration area. Contractor could also just crush it, it's a stone.
So for like to the walkway, to the walkway down to the, uh.
For the driveway and walkway, that all could be crushed on site with a drum crusher. Yeah.
Okay.
So it can be, it can be worked.
I'm done.
Okay.
You have scope of building and condition.
I do.
And the size of the lot.
Yeah, scale and visual impact to surrounding area. Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I think it's important, um, to, to go through those. I know sometimes, Bill, you don't like to read the findings out loud, but I think it's really important to go through those.
Uh, sure. So, um, which of the, now, I, I'm listing these as concerns we would convey to the select board. Do any of these want to be, uh, conti-.
Conditions?
Conditions.
Except I don't think they apply to the LPOD.
Yeah, I think that's right. I don't think.
The only thing is just the, uh, the, the, you can't take the materials off, off-site as part of the LPOD.
But what about the fact that the trees have to stay? I mean, I know you say that they're going to be there, but can we put conditions that they have to stay there after we leave? I mean, after the two years, after the house.
The thing is, we're approving the plan and the, and that may, in and of itself means that the plan can't change.
Years from now.
Right.
They can't take those trees down and have it just.
They could die. Yeah, I mean.
Die.
There's, there's ash trees on that site. They're going to die.
Right, they're trees that can die.
They're going to be removed.
But can we always have trees on that bank? Is that, that's not our, we can't say that, can we? Or can we? I mean, it would nice to have trees on that bank.
I think you're always going to have trees. We're, we're doing, we're, we're planting.
I know you're planting and I know this.
78.
I understand that. I'm talking about five years from now when they decide they want a better view of the lake. Can they cut down those trees?
It's if you're cutting the trees, it's a violation unless they come back to you or the conservation commission.
And ask for permission.
And ask for permission.
Yeah.
Even, there is some provisions from, in the Wetlands Protection Act for vista, vista pruning, which isn't diminishing the canopy of the tree. It's basically getting windows, not, not cutting a tree.
But keeping the trees up there for the wildlife and the birds and the eagles.
The intention of this plan is not to impact any of the trees within your 35 no pot zone and pretty much what is shown on this plan. We have access through the trees to be removed. The trees that are shown to remain should be be remaining. If there's a damaged tree or something that's, that's.
Right, of course.
That's.
The wind blows down.
Impacting the, the house.
Of course.
They would have, we would have to go to, technically, we'd have to go back to the conservation commission. Not sure about coming back to the planning board, but at least we have to put the conservation commission to get approval to remove that tree.
Yeah.
What other conditions did we have?
Well, the ones I have are, um, the question about abutters' and blasting, the effects of blasting on abutters' foundations and wells, um, bird-friendly glass, the scale and visual impact to surrounding areas. We, we want to draw the select board's attention to 6.3.6C, which is, will not be detrimental to adjacent uses or to the established or future character of the neighborhood.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, and stipulation, which I think is in the bylaw, that blasted rock must remain on the site. And you just said, it, you know, use it on the driveway, use it on the walkway.
Yeah, right, right.
It could, that shouldn't be a problem. So I, actually I think that's, we don't need that. Is there anything else?
Laurie, we can't hear you.
With liability.
Can we, can we just add in?
Hang on a second, Ms. Ruth.
Somebody, you guys mentioned liability issue.
Well, the liability with respect to blasting.
Okay, so that's in with.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
We talked about the foundation. Can we also add like the patio? I mean, if it's going to hit the foundation, it'll also hit the patio if there's going to be a problem.
It's any part of the. It's sort of like, what I was doing on my phone was actually looking up blasting protocol in Massachusetts. They have to have a seismic, uh, reading out there. They have to notify the abutter, ask if you, they have to ask you if you want a pre-survey. They recommend, yes, you do. And that they would do the full survey, just like what we did. And that's the entire property. It's not just the house and the foundation.
Okay.
It's the foundation.
It's the foundation, the deck, it's the entire property. They'd have to do, your property, they'd have to do the silver property also.
Okay.
So, and it is through the fire department locally. I'm assuming Ned would be involved with that, but it's, it's a building inspector. But it was pretty much what we talked about. You know, you have to have a pre, and pre, pre-inspection.
It may not, it may not cover the cost of replacing a lamp that is not, that is vibrated off a, a living room table and, and breaks.
I bet you would.
But maybe it does.
I bet you would.
We just, we refer this to the select board.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted, didn't call it blasting per se, what did you call it?
So there's, there's different methods of, of ledge removal. They don't have to blast. They can, they can remove the ledge by hydraulic hammer. They put it on an excavator and they bang away at it. That's one way method to do it. They can drill and split it also. It's not a method that's used a lot, but they can do that. They put it, they drill a hole and they split it hydraulically. So there's.
That's what they did on Oak Street.
There's different ways to do it.
They did it with a hydraulic.
So I, I just didn't want them to, like, only do, like, blasting, you know? But if we can put it for any kind of, like.
Ledge removal.
Remodeling.
Right.
Yeah. That's my suggestion.
Okay. Yeah, they did the hammer on a excavator at the, at the Avrigo Road Bridge.
Right.
And I had to reposition all the pictures on our walls every night. Sitting in my chair, I gotta free you.
It's, yeah, one method is, has, there's different ways to do it and they're gonna have different impacts and ways.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Anything further from the public, the applicant, advisors, or this board? If not, then are we ready to vote? Can I have a motion to approve this special permit?
You need to close the public hearing.
Sorry, thank you. May I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Carl, seconded. Any discussion? Can you call the roll, please, Jennifer?
We didn't do the findings.
Do, when do we do the findings?
We're just closing a public hearing.
Yeah. I will, I will read the findings.
Yeah.
Okay. Or at least make reference to them.
Yeah.
So I think you can go, go ahead and call the roll.
Wayne?
Aye.
Bree?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Okay, now, the findings required are 6.3.6 and they are, there are five of them. The proposed use is in compliance, is, is in compliance with all provisions or requirements of this bylaw and in harmony with its.
Bill, I'm sorry to interrupt, but can you start at the very beginning? It says, before granting a special permit for any use required, a permit under the provisions of this bylaw, the special permit granting authority shall find that the proposed use, and then it starts with A.
Okay. You've just said it, so I'll just go to A. In compliance with all provisions and requirements of the bylaw and in harmony with its general intent and purpose. B is essential or desirable to the public convenience or welfare at the proposed location. C will not be detrimental to adjacent uses or to the established or future character of the neighborhood. D will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. And E will not overload any public water, drainage, or sewer system or any other municipal facility to such an extent that the proposed use of any existing use in the immediate area or in any other area of the town will be unduly subjected to the hazards affecting public health, safety, or general welfare. I think we're done on this. And we will send a note to the select board.
But we haven't voted on, we just closed the hearing.
We closed the hearing?
We closed the hearing.
Sorry.
But we haven't.
That's right.
Haven't voted on that.
So are you satisfied? Kate, do you want me to read the beginning of 6.3.6 again?
No, no, I read it, we're fine.
Okay, good, thank you.
Excuse me, and you also need to adopt the, the, the requirements in 6.5.8. But it shows all of the plan requirements.
Oh, right, yeah.
And then also 6.5.9, that, you know, the existing building is setback from the main high water, all of that. So those are all the special requirements, so you can just incorporate the findings in 6.5.8 and 6.5.9.
I think that's the right thing to do, is to incorporate them by.
By number.
By.
Number.
By number. Please don't tell me I have to read all this. No.
As, as set forth in the application.
Right, there you go. Thank you. Which what? Yeah, yeah. Okay. Okay, the hearing is closed. Now, are there any further questions, comments about the application?
We can't talk about it now.
No, we can, the board can deliberate, but.
The board can.
Okay. Just no public.
The public hearing being closed means that applicants, their team, and other attendees can no longer comment.
So does the board have any other questions, comments?
Do we have a timeframe on this or does it matter?
There is a timeframe in the application, I think.
In the application, I saw it and that's gonna be.
Six weeks or something close to.
That's okay, that's okay with us, right?
For, the construction time?
Yeah.
Yeah, there is, yeah. Any other questions? Comments? Shall we proceed to vote on the application?
Yes, we need a moment.
Can I have a motion to approve the application?
Make a motion, we approve this application?
Is there a second?
Second.
With the conditions.
With the conditions.
Did I hear a second? I'm sorry.
Second, yes.
Okay. Any further comments before we vote? Jennifer, please call the roll.
Kate?
I'm going to be a nay, and I'd like the minutes to reflect. My reason for voting against this is that rel, to the relevant wording in our, in our bylaw purpose, I feel this is, is out of, this project is out of scale and not in character with the existing community and surrounding area as well as, as the lake. And I remain concerned about unanswered questions to do with the blasting. And for that reason, I'd like to see this, this project scaled back in, in scope. So I'm going to be a nay vote. Jennifer, could you please have the minutes reflect my reasons?
Carl?
I will also vote no. And, and essentially echoing Kate's comments, you know, scale and aesthetics.
Nancy?
I would, the provisions going to the select board.
What?
What did you vote, Nancy?
I voted aye.
Oh.
Wayne?
Aye.
Bree?
Aye, because I think they probably fulfill the LPD requirements.
Bill?
I'm happy about the scope.
Aye.
Gary?
Oh, a reluctant aye with my concerns being 6.3.6C.
Yeah.
If we're sending to the.
Yes.
Yes.
The results of the vote?
So we have five yes and two no, so it passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Pinkus, you have your approval.
Thank you very much, and I, I, I don't know if I'm pretty, but thank you.
At least at this stage of the process.
Come on back soon.
Alright, thanks folks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark.
Thanks.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. It's 8:30, I know we were gonna talk about another item on the agenda, but I think we should.
Do you have anything just quick?
Very quickly, on the idea that we talked about at the last meeting was, should we turn over responsibility for LPOD approvals to CONCON since it's wetlands-related to begin with? And I have a call in Ron Brooker, I, he hasn't called back, I don't know whether he's in town. I did talk to Mike Canalis, who, and I, and I talked to Donna Brewer as well. Mike thought it was, it was fine, but he understood what Donna said, which is the Attorney General Municipal Law Unit is required to approve this kind of change, shifting of a, of a bylaw responsibility to another body. And they generally don't like that, but exceptions have been made. And Mike knew of a number of exceptions that have been made in his experience, not in Stockbridge, but elsewhere. And Donna is more than willing to have an informal conversation with the municipal law group in, municipal law unit in the Attorney General's office on our behalf to just kind of test the waters. She hasn't done that yet because I haven't talked to Ron and I think we ought to talk to the planning board as well before proceeding. If, if, if the CONCON doesn't want it, then we'll just drop this. And I, I think the question about subdivision regs and special permits and by right approvals is something that requires more than just five minutes of conversation. I think we should do that next, at the next meeting.
I'm fine with that, Bill, I just want to make the point that there is precedent in Stockbridge for transferring a bylaw over.
I, I mentioned that to Donna, she, she remembered that and.
Because we did stormwater.
Right.
And didn't we do signs?
No, we have signs.
No, but.
We might like to.
Can we take something from, or give something to the selectmen based on the sign? Oh, yeah, we did, we.
Well, that was, that was the original word. We, we haven't changed anything with the signs yet.
Right. Oh, yeah, we did, even though they did, they want us to have it, but they still want it to have a say over it.
Right.
It's like, 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 it's like a form a.
Yeah.
We don't want to give up total.
Okay, so I'll, I'll be happy to discuss that and we can talk about it.
Yeah.
The next meeting.
Next time, yeah.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, Kate.